Okay.
The Board of Supervisors to order, and I'll ask Supervisor Leggett to lead us in the pledge, and I'll ask that everybody remain standing for a moment after that.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the reason why we're here, which is the stand, one nation under God, in this world with liberty and justice for all.
Honestly, everybody remain standing for a moment of silence for Frank Dietrich. Frank was very instrumental in working with the county on many tourism things. And I know during the COVID time, he worked for the Warren County Partnership Recovery Team. And he's done a lot, and Frank had a heart attack the other day. And he's going to be dearly missed. And Dennis, you had another summary.
I'd also like to include in that Jeff Colleen, Jeff Colleen, as most of you know, was the head of the Fund for Lake George. He was a leader in our efforts to get the boat inspection, mandatory boat inspection program here. He was a great guy, and he will sorely be missed.
So give it just a moment.
Thank you.
On to Volkswagen.
Mr. Panover.
Yeah.
Mr. Leggett.
Here.
Mr. Diamond.
Here.
Mr. McDevitt.
Here.
Ms. Bramer.
Here.
Mr. Bruno.
Here.
Mr. Driscoll.
Here.
Mrs. Frazier.
Here.
Mr. Drossi.
Here.
Ms. Hogan.
Here.
Mr. Dickinson.
Here.
Mr. Marino.
Here.
Mr. Straub.
Here.
Mr. Wild.
Here.
Mr. McGowan.
Yes.
Ms. Seaver.
Present.
Mr. Beatty. Mr. Thomas.
Here.
Ms. Runyon. Chairman Garrity.
Here.
Form is established.
At this time, I'd like to introduce John Towne, the new administrator for Warren County. And John, would you like to say a few words about it?
Yeah, I just want to say I'm honored to be here in Warren County on this beautiful day. And I look forward to working with all of you. I appreciate your support as we went through the hiring process. It was a great time, and thanks.
Okay, now we'll open up the privilege for a public comment. Anybody wish to address the board before we start the business portion of the meeting? Seeing none. Motion approved on November 8th, Board Minutes, subject to correction by the clerk, motion by Supervisor Strow, second by Supervisor Bruno. Any discussion? All those in favor?
All right.
Hearing. Okay, we're going to do the award for employees of the month, next month. And I don't think we had any leadership graduates this. So I'll declare, we'll start right into the first public hearing. It will be Local Law Number Five of two thousand and two, entitled Local Law Granting Partial Exemption on Real Property Taxes Action for Eligible Persons sixty-five years of age and over, and repealing resolution two fifty-one of two thousand and twelve. I'll ask clerk to read the notice.
Notice is hereby given that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Warren, New York, is considering the adoption of a proposed local law number five for the year two thousand and twenty-two, entitled A Local Law Granting Partial Exemption on Real Property Taxation for Eligible Persons Sixty-five Years of Age and Over, and repealing resolution number two fifty-one of two thousand and twelve. Notice is further given that pursuant to a resolution adopted by the Board of Supervisors on November eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, a public hearing will be held by the Board of Supervisors on December sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-two at ten a.m. in the supervisors' rooms at the Warren County Municipal Center, thirteen forty State Route Nine, Queensberry, New York, at which time and place all persons interested in the matter of such proposed local law number five for the year two thousand and twenty-two will be heard concerning same. A copy of said local laws available for inspection during regular business hours by contacting the clerk of the Board of Supervisors at the above stated address and may be viewed on the Warren County website.
Okay, we'll open the public hearing. Any comments on this proposed local law? Anybody? Seeing none, now leave it open for a few minutes in case somebody has something. We'll move right on to the second public hearing. Clerk to read the.
Notice is hereby given that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Warren, New York, is considering the adoption of a proposed local law number one for the year two thousand and twenty-three, entitled A Local Law Fixing the Salaries of Certain County Officers and Employees of Warren County. Notice is further given that pursuant to a resolution adopted by the Board of Supervisors on November eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, a public hearing will be held by the Board of Supervisors on December sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-two at ten a.m. in the supervisors' rooms at the Warren County Municipal Center, thirteen forty State Route Nine, Queensberry, New York, at which time and place all persons interested in the matter of such proposed local law number one for the year two thousand and twenty-three will be heard concerning same. A copy of said local laws available for inspection during regular business hours by contacting the clerk of the Board of Supervisors at the above stated address and may be viewed on the Warren County website.
Okay, I'll open this up for any public discussion on local law number one of two thousand and twenty-three. Anybody wish to comment? Let's sing none. Then I'll declare the public hearings closed on the age exemption and this local law for two thousand and twenty-three. We'll move on to reports of chairs. Chairman's report, November eighteenth, attended September meeting of the Board of Supervisors. Or on November eighteenth, would have been a November meeting of Board of Supervisors. Attended Criminal Justice Committee meetings on the twenty-first, attended county facilities and parks, Parks Own and Public Works, Alabama Concerns, Economic Growth and Development Legislative Rules. On the twenty-second, on December first, attended Personnel Committee Meeting. On December second, attended meetings with Lake George CVV Board. On December fourth or fifth, I attended the AATV Annual Meeting in Lake George. And on December twelfth, I attended Criminal Justice, Human Services, EMS and Tourism, and actually tax meetings here, County Center. We'll go on to Chairman's Supervisor Connor Conover.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was not, I did not chair the last Public Works Committee, but I'd like to thank my colleague, Mr. Thomas, for chairing that committee meeting. And I would turn my, any opportunity to report over to Mr. Thomas if that's a, okay.
Sure.
Frank. Thank you, Mr. Conover. Thank you, Chairman.
Yeah.
The DPW Public Works Committee, well, it was in the November, I'm not sure the exact date. From that meeting, those meetings, there's resolution seven thirty-six. Think through seven fifty. There's thirty-six and forty is increasing capital projects. One is the Difficil Road over going Creek, Glen Creek Bridge. The other one is halfway Creek Bridge Replacement at Town of Queensberry. That's seven forty. Seven thirty-seven, thirty-eight, and thirty-nine are contract awards for septic cleaning, crane service and electrical service. Forty-one, seven forty-one is increasing the funding to the East River Drive Call Street Rehabilitation Project. Seven forty-two is rescinding resolution two ninety-five of two thousand and twenty-two. And that's to do with the halfway Creek Bridge Replacement in the Town of Queensberry. Seven forty-three is amending the county budget for various departments within, within DPW. Seven forty-four is, well, seven forty-four, forty-five, forty-six, and forty-seven are renewals of the contracts with the snowmobile clubs, the money that they get each year. Seven forty-eight is in agreement with Saratoga Snowmobile Association to use part of our railroad in Hadley. Seven forty-nine is renewing the license, license agreement with Revolution Rail for two thousand and twenty-three. And seven fifty is awarding the bid to E-Lot Electronics Recycling for Bird Services for two thousand and twenty-three. And I believe that's all.
Okay. Supervisor Leggett, Finance EMS.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Finance met on December thirty-first, before your resolutions six seventy-eight, six seventy-nine, and then seven fifty-seven through eight oh five. There's fifty-one in total. Seventeen are roller calls. Perhaps we can combine some for expediency today. That's fifty-one out of one hundred and thirty that are before you today. Fourteen are from the clerk of the board for items funded in the two thousand and twenty-three budget. Those are seven seventy-nine through seven ninety-two, and thirteen are to authorize the standard annual resolutions. Those are seven ninety-three to eight zero five. Most others are taken care of the end of the year, accounting budget adjustments to make sure there's money to pay. Two are of note, number seven seven six, which is renewing property casualty insurance for eight hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. We'd like to give special thanks to Self Insurance Director Amy Clute and her competent office for working with our agents to bring policies that hold our insurance costs down below even last year's. And then the seven seventy-seven, seven seventy-eight is from the sheriff for the funding of the body cameras for our patrol officers. And with the advice and counsel of Rob Lynch at the Treasurer's Office and the county attorney, we have taken care of the nitty gritty to be in line with all the gaspy, you know, regulations regarding purchases and leases, you know, for that one. I would also like to thank Treasurer Swan and his office for their attention to detail. As frustrating as it can be sometimes, they make everybody toe the line on things. It does keep us in fine shape. And we always come out well in our auditors report for it. So the effort has a payoff. And when you look at all the books throughout the county, it does keep everything organized well. That is my report for Finance. EMS, I'm sorry, we did call a meeting due to illness. I was not able to make the meeting that, that day. Thanks for those that were able to step up, and we will pick it up again at another time.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor McDevitt.
Nothing, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Bramer.
Thank you, Chairman. The ARPA Committee did meet on November fifteenth, and we have several different resolutions in here. It was really a great meeting, and we have some nice organizations, I think, that we are recommending to the full board to approve. I hope we can get behind all of these. Not going to read everyone, but I do want to go through several of these. Resolution six thirty is for a new childcare center that would be based in Queensberry. Really something very needed according to our Workforce Development Office and others, so I hope that people will support that. Six eighty-one is for the City of Glens Falls Recreation Department to upgrade parks, specifically their basketball courts that really have been in need of upgrading and have seen a lot of use since the pandemic has pushed a lot of people outdoors. Six eighty-two is for the Brandt Lake Foundation. They would like to do some water quality restoration work, specifically application of Procel Core to treat eighty percent of the metal foil in that lake. Six eighty-three and six eighty-four are for the EDC, for the efforts, to ongoing efforts for affordable housing initiatives, education programs in to all of our communities, and also to reimburse them for the broadband expenses that they incurred during the pandemic, and we thank them for all of their efforts there. Six eighty-five is for the Glens Falls Hospital to renovate the emergency department, which is really needed for mental health and behavioral health patients who are coming in with crises, and particularly for the adolescent, the kids who are being held staying at the hospital with these problems. It really needs to be upgraded for them. Six eighty-six and six eighty-seven are for the Warren County Soil and Water, for a weather station and for lake monitoring programs. Those were modest requests, those last two, and I really hope that people will support them. And the last one I want to highlight is for a great organization in our county, the Tri-County United Way. They are seeking assistance to help them with fundraising efforts as things have really changed for them. As a result of the pandemic, they are not able to get into a lot of offices to do the fundraising they used to do. So we're hoping that the committee is asking for your support for all of those. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Bruno.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. County Facilities met on November twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-two. I was unable to attend that, so I didn't chair that. And for any comments, et cetera, I'll defer to the vice chairman, who did chair that Supervisor McGowan.
Well, thank you. Supervisor Bruno, and I, I hope you had a good time. I, I enjoyed covering for you.
Thank you, idea.
Supervisor Bruno said County Facilities did meet on November twenty-second. Really, nothing major to go over. But the, the lease agreement, we went in, was a reduction of twenty-five cents, which is, I believe, what we decided was, you know, a fair, fair amount than what the average other airports are doing. They have submission for the, for grant for the runway one nineteen replacement project for design. Authorizing a grant for the Department of Transportation for the capital grant program for the demolition, construction of a six bay T hangar, which is really needed. The, the other one is really looking pretty sad, and I hopefully, the snow's not too heavy this winter, so. The the other one was the greener between the Skimhorn Aviation Rich Air for heavy equipment recovery dolly that's going to be shared with the Saratoga County Airport. We will be holding on to that dolly up here, but it's a shared process, which really was a savings, really, for both counties. So that was a good move. And the other two were really awards for the recycling with Ace Card, solid waste and the medical waste in, in agreement with the you know, recycling and disposal services. So really, nothing major, do really more to me, some housekeeping. So I hope we can get your approval. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Supervisor McGowan. That should get to it.
Did you want, either one of you want to update on, oh, the demos coming on the old correctional facility?
Yeah, I can, I, I met with, and I'm meeting after this meeting with Superintendent Heydros. And that should be complete next week.
Good.
It's ongoing, and as I said, Supervisor Heydros, you have any comments? Throw it right in. As of right now, they should be wrapped up with the project probably by end of week, next week. Really, they're in the final stages now, kind of cutting up some of the remainder of the steel off the walls. And then it'll just be a cleanup within the facility. The mitigation was done for the asbestos a couple of weeks ago, so that's been over for a while. So it's just the last bit of cleanup inside the jail. And if anyone else would like to come around afterwards, I will take you through the jail facility because they're not over there today. So if you'd like to take a walk through, after the meeting, I'm going to take Dan through.
Thank. We'll be in on that.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
That's it, Dan?
Yes, thank you. Thanks, Chairman.
Supervisor Driscoll.
Thank you, Chairman. The Human Services Committee met on November twenty-first and also met on December first to tie up some Department of Social Services matters. Coming out of those meetings, resolution seven nineteen is a continuation of a countryside membership in a professional trade association that affords staff the opportunity to get credentialed and, and up to date on different things that they need in the course of their work. Seven twenty is the continuation of an agreement between the Department of Social Services and the Warren County Department of Work Fair Development, a new name, but same, same folks, live learning for people for temporary assistance and SNAP units at, at Warren County to continue to provide employment referrals to all recipients of TA and SNAP benefits. And I ask for your support of those. And if I can just take the opportunity, we've spoken all year and for a long time about morale and ways that we can encourage camaraderie and, and people working better together. And I was really excited when I, I got the flyer about the holiday happenings that we've done. If you, if you take a walk around the campus, the doors and, and a lot of decorations. And wherever you, whatever your faith is, I think it's still a good opportunity to to kind of celebrate working together, and hopefully, we can find a way to continue some of these initiatives throughout the year. Again, it, it helps morale, it helps people's ability to work better together. And I encourage, and, and thank all those people that were responsible for this. Thank you.
That it? Ben, yes, I'm sorry, thank you. Okay, Supervisor Frazier.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I'd like to thank Supervisor McDevitt for filling in for me while I had my knee replacement. So at this point, I'm going to let him give the report as he was at the meetings, and thank you.
Thank you. And one of the things that has always amazed me, having served up here a couple of years, is the, the wide range of, of services provided in the category of health services. From, from advice and counsel on addiction to mental health, to the effective utilization of opioid funds to ensure we have an adequate supply of home health aids, special education services, preschool services, visiting nurses, and, and senior nutrition meal programs. Included in our package today is our items seven oh six and seven eighteen. And they, 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 in one way or another, they deal with those issues, which are very, very important. The, I've always been impressed with Warren County in, in its ability to provide on a countywide basis, the quality of those services. If someone has a health crisis, our visiting nurses are there. I, and, and, and I think the items that are encapsulated today in, 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 in our agenda, I think talk to some of those issues, and I would appreciate your support for, for all of them. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Jurassic.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Appreciate it. The Criminal Justice and Public Safety Committee, December twelfth. Resolution sixteen through seven oh three are before you for consideration. We're eligible to authorizing agreements for services, including excuse me, six ninety-nine, which is in agreement with the City of Glens Falls for fire cause origin investigative services for the county. So we thank the members of the Glens Falls Fire Department for their talents and their efforts on that behalf. And we have a quick, I appreciate the proclamation that's before us today for declaring December impaired driving laws. It continues to be a problem. In fact, a new study was just released this week by my former agency, the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration, that shows currently fifty-six percent of all seriously fatally injured road users tested positive for alcohol or same type of apparent substance, with cannabis being that leading other substance. So it continues to be a serious problem everywhere in this country, including New County. Thank you.
Supervisor Dixon.
I have no report. I miss the OCTAX Committee in a second. I'll let Gene cover it for me. I'll let Gene respond to that. I do have one thing at the appropriate time. I, I would like to bring a resolution off the floor for that came out of the OCTAX Committee for Lake George TV, so.
It's Arianna. It's in one of our floor resolutions already.
Okay, thank you. Stole my thunder.
Supervisor Marino.
Just Dennis, we did pass one resolution, five seventy. It's a getting money to our historical, Warren County Historical Society to move forward on the program for the upcoming events. And that was the only resolution that came out of that meeting.
Okay, Supervisor Stroud.
Thank you. Legislative rules and governmental operations met November twenty-second. There's three resolutions before you that came out of that. Resolution eight oh six, and that's the one for partial exemptions for real property taxation for eligible persons. And there is a sliding scale for that. Those are people over sixty-five. And seven twenty-one and seven twenty-two, both of which we don't deal with vinyl development. A request by the IT Department, it is a programming tool that would support them. And there's two resolutions. One is to basically, board an agreement from November twenty, November first, two thousand and twenty-two to December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two. There is no cost for that. And then the other resolution is again for vinyl development. It's for five thousand dollars to cover a term commencing January first, two thousand and twenty-three, and terminating December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three. And that's all that came out of the committee that's before you today.
I think I need to go back to Supervisor Marino.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll give a little quick report on tourism. We had, we had a mixed meeting between tourism and tax. It was well attended, a lot of good information. We finally had a meeting that we got started five minutes late instead of an hour, but it always happens. But anyway, one resolution is seven seven two, coming into finance to go ahead and pay the bills for Charles Alwood Park. Also, we made some changes downstairs in tourism to keep us going, and we're moving in front of you. And come to first year, we're going to have, maybe a couple of people get together, and let's get a good RFP out for a new leader there. And we'll work, all work together, and so we get it, proper information on that stuff. And there are four resolutions, three and four, which I like your altar, but yes, sir. And we did mention about Ice Castle at that meeting, and I said to the people in the audience, well, another couple of days, as soon as the weather gets better, the ice will be starting at Ice Castle. And that afternoon, I got a picture that they turned the water on, and they were starting to make the ice. So that's going, you'll find too. Thank you, sir.
Supervisor Wild.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On eleven twenty-two, economic growth and development met with two resolutions in front of you today, and I wish you, for your support. The first one, seven oh four, is for NAPM, IGIS support for the Lake George Land Conservancy. Seven oh five is a Crenshaw Library agreement with our Workforce Development Board for sharing laptops in terms of helping us gain people into our workforce. In addition, I had two meetings that I think I might be interested to the board. Eleven thirty, I attended a meeting with the New York Federal Reserve. They talked about business activity of the Glens Falls metropolitan area, job growth, remote work. Basically, we follow pretty closely with the rest of the region in terms of what we're doing. One key point, remote work is definitely here to stay from what they think and the data is showing. And in addition to that, they had no discussion about where interest rates are going. So to my disappointment, we have no idea what's going to be happening in the future. But on the sixteenth, I also attended the Workforce Development Board. That's the Saratoga, one Washington Workforce Development Board. In review, the focus for the next year is mostly on youth and the trades, and exposing youth to the trades in early age, middle school, and later high school. Seems to be too late to be able to, I encourage these kids to consider the trades. One of the things that I expect coming in front of this board is a agreement with a virtual reality firm that will be directly related towards exposing this youth to the trades, where they actually put on a headset and pretend like they're changing oil or working with machine tools or the like. So that's all I have for today, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd just like to add that Warren County hosted a job fair in Warren skirt this past week. And I think they had twenty-seven people come in. They had eighteen, fifteen, eighteen businesses present, and they had twenty-seven folks come in and review, and I think they got some job applications, so it was very successful. And I thank Lisa and her team for putting that together. Supervisor Seaver.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before you say, you have resolutions out of the Special Committee for NACO and ISAT from seven twenty-three, all the way over to seven thirty-four. If I could just take a minute to thank members of this committee, Supervisors Hogan, Bramer, Leggett, and Driscoll for your commitment this year in moving forward different initiatives and best practices that we've learned about at a state and a national level. I hope that whatever the leadership brings for two thousand and twenty-three, that we continue to see this special committee in full force. I think that it is something that we've heard about from committee to committee this month, where we've talked about the need where we've talked about uh, the need to engage with the legislative process with NACO and ISAC, both as it related to EMS needs throughout our county. We heard about unfunded mandates and concerns. We also heard about concerns with identity theft and cybersecurity theft uh, threats. So I do believe that this committee has provided an opportunity for our our department heads and for members of this board to come forward and ask for resolutions in support of their concerns. You can see that here in in multiple resolutions that have a very local feel to them. The resolutions were approved and asked by committee unanimously and asked uh, our clerk of the board to please customize and personalize the letters to our state and federal officials so that in fact, they understand how this implicates Warren County, New York specifically. You also have um, a contract in front of you for Amazon Prime. I wanted to take the opportunity to thank our clerk of the board and our Director of Purchasing, Julie Butler, for their work on this. This has been a couple of months since we attended ISAC. And one of the most, I think, pressing um, issues or or highlights of this contract is our ability to work with our local vendors, minority and women-owned businesses that puts forward an opportunity for many of our businesses who may not have been doing business um, at that at that national level and uh, certainly gives them an opportunity to uh, be supported locally here in Warren County. Um, so I would ask for your support in those resolutions. And uh, to our new county administrator, there were multiple discussions in that committee about stay interviews and exit interviews and and many other employee appreciation initiatives that we were all very excited to see that you were coming on board um, here in December and just ask that as the time goes on, you take a look at some of those minutes and and review those suggestions. So thank you. Thank you. That is all.
Okay Supervisor Pounds.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, the Personnel Administration and Higher Education Committee met on December first uh, before you are resolutions seven fifty-two through seven fifty-six. Uh, the first one is uh, decreasing salaries, amending the table of organization, uh, Deputy Director of Clinical for Office Community Services and the County Administrator Position. Uh, seven fifty-three authorizes the uh, uh, county attorney to uh, contract the services of Romer, Waylon, Gold, and Benin uh, for employment law litigation uh, to deal with Kathleen Innis, and that's up to twenty thousand dollars. Uh, seven fifty-four authorizes the county attorney to negotiate a settlement up to fifty thousand dollars uh, with Frank Den- Dennis. Uh, seven fifty-five, I'm happy to say is if it passes, uh, is appointing members to our Warren County Ethics Board, and we'll have a a full board with uh, alternates if this this should pass. So we hope everybody would vote for it. Uh, and seven fifty-six is a uh, agreement with the Senate Court uh, for the services relative to mobile time uh, time and attendance system. And that's in the HR department. Uh, there was a presentation by uh, Trish Nanger, our Civil Service Director uh, about uh, changes that she's uh, the more advertising that she's done uh, in her office and also about the challenges uh, with New York State and the amount of time it takes to uh, to hear back from the state. And lastly, on uh, this Tuesday, twelve twenty, at eleven AM, excuse me, that'll be a joint uh, personnel and finance meeting. And uh, it'll be discussion of uh, funding for SUNY Adirondack, uh, whether we wanna change the funding or we don't, or I think it'll just be uh, just be us, you know, it'll just be personnel and finance. Uh, we, I don't think the college will be there and uh, and uh, Washington County won't be there. So we have to decide what we want to do. That's my report.
Supervisor Leggett, you want to give the administrators' report?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I'll kick it off here with our employee anniversary report. This year, we'd like to recognize for twenty-five years of service at EPW, Damon Baker, and thank him for all the services on that. I made it to all the committee meetings all but last Monday due to to illness, but watched on YouTube to get caught up on that. And also missed the Alpa Committee last week. Sorry, uh, Chairwoman, Chair, Co-Chair uh, Dickinson for for not being able to make that due to scheduling. We had uh, seemed to be a short month. We had Thanksgiving and and that stuff. And I hope everybody had a had a good Thanksgiving. Well, attended Warren County Insurance Meeting and the resolutions that came out of committee or before you on that. Attended the Adirondack Regional Chamber of Commerce Economic Review uh, meeting at the Queensberry that Supervisor Wild had had described. There also attended the Association of Town and Villages Winter Meeting and got good updates on housing and broadband efforts in the area. We've also started a formula for the sponsorship for the SUNY Adirondack um, shares between Washington and Warren County. And we are are using recommendations based on Supervisor Khan over here of where we take our base formula that we have been doing and now look at what it would look like uh, to increase our sponsorship share based more above that amount uh, along with that amount on on assessed values. And those will be becoming before committees here shortly. I would really like to welcome our new county administrator, John Tafflin. It's great to see you up there. Uh, look forward to to your tenure at that seat. Uh, I'd like to thank the Chairman Garrity and the Board Supervisors for the opportunity and the privilege to sit as acting county administrator. It was hugely educational to see so close up how the county operates. I learn much about the ins and outs and the behind the scenes work that make this place really tick. I want to thank all the department heads and all the employees who are dedicated to this county and to the operations of the county and to the communities that we serve. With them, we are strong, we are productive, and we are efficient. Special thanks to the Confidential Secretary to the County Administrator, Christie Miller, for her true professionalism and all that she does, the depth and knowledge of the county attorney's county administrator's duties and responsibilities, and making sure that the office runs smoothly. Also, special thanks to the Assistant to the County Administrator, who really carried the weight of the office during this period, which included the whole budget process. Her knowledge and ability with the county account, with county accounting is a prime asset to the whole process. And she is immensely responsible for the fact that the budget is done on time and accordingly. Her positive and truly outwork has has made the whole experience wonderful. And I can't thank her enough. For all her help. So with pleasure, I welcome Mr. Tafflin. Wish him the best and know that the county will be in good hands. Thank you.
Any other supervisors have any reports they want to add on to the reports already given? If not, we'll go to the county attorneys.
Thank you. Good morning. Um, I wanted to start uh, maybe with something that could be obvious, but could easily be overlooked as well. Uh, this month for this board meeting, there are uh, a hundred and twenty resolutions that have been presented for the board's consideration today. And behind those hundred and twenty resolutions, um, a number were, uh, my office was aided and assisted by the clerk of the board in preparing. Uh, but over a hundred of them came through Amy Turcot in my office, who has performed and done a tremendous job, not just this month, but every month since I've started as the county attorney. And I would be remiss um, after seeing so much work occur so efficiently and quickly during this cycle of committee meetings, not to specifically commend that work um, to this entire board. Um, and all of those resolutions are there in your packets in part because of the time, energy, and dedication that she put into making sure that she coordinated not just with the committees, but the departments many times uh, who were sponsoring those resolutions. With that said, in twenty nineteen, this county did six hundred and thirty-one resolutions. In twenty twenty, five hundred and twenty-six. In twenty-one, six hundred and thirty-one. This year, the number of resolutions, including all of the resolutions that are for your consideration today, is over eight hundred, eight hundred and eight resolutions. And the reason I bring this out is it's not just the piece of paper that's in front of you, but what's what happens to get that paper there. But more importantly, what often has to occur after the vote occurs today? I would dare to say hundreds of those resolutions are tied to contracting and contracts for Warren County, which requires an enormous amount of follow-on effort from drafting, reviewing, modifying, approving, signing, and then coordinating with the other parties to make sure we not just get, not only get a signed contract back, but we get all the additional documentation that we require for each and every contract that we enter into. I I say this all in part because my hope for twenty twenty-three is not only to uh, start focusing on uh, how to make the county attorney's office run more efficiently, how we can continue to do more with the staff that we have. But I'm hoping to be able to open that up with our new county administrator to work countywide with the departments. I'm trying to look at the processes we've always done and see if there's a better way in twenty twenty-three to get the job done quicker, more accurately, and more efficiently. Last uh, week, um, the attorneys in my office and I uh, had a tremendous opportunity to go to the uh, annual New York State Attorneys Association Winter Continuing Legal Education Program. And I thank the board uh, for that opportunity. Um, the program was broken up into two parts. The first part was a more general approach to some specific areas that county attorney's offices are dealing with statewide. Um, and then the second half focused on some of the new policies and procedures going into effect in family court. I kind of wanted to just quickly focus a little bit on that first half of the program. We had some uh, tremendous in-depth uh, training on extreme risk protection orders, also known red red flag laws. It's something that the board does not see, but that's uh, occurring on an increasing basis. I I commend the sheriff and the officers of the sheriff's department because they have been diligent when confronted with an individual who appears to qualify under the statute, meaning that there's probable cause to believe that the individual presents a risk to himself or to others. They are automatically gearing up and preparing as a, it's not a mandatory reporter, but they're required to prepare and file a petition for that individual as part of a civil procedure, which is very different than what the sheriff's department has historically done um, as far as criminal law and criminal enforcement goes. The the wrinkle and hiccup that was discussed uh, at the meeting and that we're experiencing here is, as we all know, we're a tourist destination. And the law specifically provides that when the individual, when a law enforcement officer in Warren County becomes aware that an individual presents these risks, they're required to prepare that petition and filing. But the filing has to occur in the county of that individual's residence. So for example, on Friday, I filed a petition in Franklin County for an individual um, who had presented under the red flag laws a risk to others. The court directed us to appear with the officers and other witnesses today on Friday in Malone, New York. Fortunately, we were able to arrange a way to not have to go there today. But it's going to be a significant strain on the sheriff's department because they're going to have to deploy officers potentially throughout the state in response to these petitions that they're required to file. And my office is not going to allow a deputy sheriff or somebody in the sheriff's department to appear in court without representation and legal guidance. So it's going to be a strain to some degree on my office as well. Um, there was also a excellent presentation by the Comptroller's Office on Article eighteen and conflicts of interest, which is the foundation for our code of ethics. I'm looking forward to reviewing that information with our new incoming Board of Ethics. If this board approves the slate that's in front of you today. And uh, additionally, there was a legislative update that was provided by ISAC. And I just wanted to hit briefly on three, what I feel are three important pieces that the supervisors for Warren County should have in the back of their mind as we launch into twenty twenty-three. Number one, uh, over Thanksgiving, the State of New York Legislature has opened up the statute of limitations under what's called the Adult Survivors Act. It's legislation that's very similar to the Children's uh, Victim Act, which we've talked about. The Adult Survivors Act is a one-year period that's now open for any individual who was over the age of eighteen years and was sex sexually abused to initiate a lawsuit irregardless of when the claim of abuse occurred. Its impact and implication will be somewhat similar to what this county has observed and absorbed through the Child Victims Act. And I anticipate over the remaining eleven months of the opening of the statute that this county will receive claims by individuals who were adults suffered abuse that would qualify under the penal law and are now seeking uh, financial compensation for that abuse. And it can take on a number of different forms. It doesn't mean that quote unquote, Warren County was the abuser, but we could have been viewed, or the theory could be that we facilitated the abuse through a relationship with the party that abused. Um, the general consensus seems to be that there will be a number of claims arriving arising out of jail operations. And I'll keep the board informed over the next eleven months if and when those claims start to come in. My hope is uh, we will have insurance coverage for the years that come in to us um, under these losses. And again, there there won't be any notices of claim because that requirement has been waived by the legislature. Second, the state legislature, for the first time since eighteen forty-seven, has changed the wrongful death lawsuit. What's most important about that is they've opened up two categories for recovery. Wrongful death in New York State has always been about pecuniary loss. What was the financial loss suffer suffered? It did not permit pain and suffering. They have changed the statute, one, to allow what they call recovery for pain, grief, and anguish. They were, I guess, not going to use the words pain and suffering, but grief and anguish. And any person who can prove that they are what's called a close family member may now file a lawsuit. Previously, it was limited to the executor, the executrix, or the administrator of an estate to file a lawsuit. Um, so those categories have opened up substantially. And there's a concern that it opens up municipalities substantially to uh, greater risk of these wrongful death claims, which potentially are going to be valued much higher since they are allowed now to consider grief and anguish suffered by the close family member due to the death of the individual. And the last part of the legislative update, which really caught my attention, is um, last year in New York City, there was a lawsuit against the City of New York to increase the assigned council rate. New York State Legislature has set for well over twenty years, the assigned council rate at seventy-five dollars an hour. Attempts to raise that in the annual budget have consisted Attempts to raise that in the annual budget have consistently fallen short. And a lawsuit against the City of New York last summer resulted in a decision and a judgment against the City of New York. And the City of New York was ordered by the court to increase the rate from seventy five dollars an hour to a hundred and fifty dollars per hour. Recently, a similar lawsuit was filed by the New York State Bar Association against the State of New York to address the assigned counsel rate. In the remaining fifty eight counties. I'm sorry, fifty seven counties of the State of New York that were not, that are not in New York City. The potential is that if that lawsuit is successful, as the lawsuit was in the City of New York, the assigned counsel rate will double from seventy five to a hundred and fifty dollars. It'll be done through a judicial process, which. Suggests that the state. Will not be providing funding along with that judicial decision, effectively doubling the cost for assigned counsel work in the state of, State of New York. And in Warren County. That that will be an issue. I know that this board will be looking at and asked to look at as we move into two thousand and twenty three. Since the last board meeting, we received one notice of claim. The notice of claim was received yesterday afternoon from Orion Smith. And I will be addressing that in more detail during a request for executive session. Concerning tax foreclosure. Christopher Briggs, my nearest member of my team who started in September, has been busy working on title. Search and the foundation for the tax foreclosure process that we use. He has completed a tremendous amount of work to date. We're well on course to complete that work. For the tax foreclosure proceedings, which will start in two thousand and twenty three. He's done a hundred and fifty three continuation of titles. He's completed fifty seven, three-year searches for residential properties. And out of about sixty three searches for two-year properties, we have about fifty left in total. So we're well ahead of schedule. All of those are built back onto the properties as well. So it's not often the county attorney's office actually is able to. Generate some revenue. Unfortunately, we do generate it for those properties that are. Now delinquent or so far delinquent that they will be going towards tax foreclosure next year. For the Board of Ethics, I did want to let the entire board know that I have pre-scheduled a meeting. Should the resolution pass, Resolution seven fifty five. For the five primary members and the three alternates, we've scheduled it for Thursday, December twenty second, two thousand and twenty two. I did this in part because it's been almost six months since we've had an active. Board of Ethics. There's a tremendous amount of work to do. I don't think we'll get to much of any of the actual work at that meeting. My hope is to get everybody, so far, seven of the eight potential members have confirmed their availability for next week, which I appreciate, given the holidays. We're going to make sure we complete their oaths of office for their appointments. We're going to do an orientation process for them under Article eighteen in the Code of Ethics. And then develop hopefully a plan for January and February, two thousand and twenty three, so they can start working through some of the backlog that. My office has been holding for the board to consider. There are four matters that I would ask for an executive session on. The first one would be under Public Officers five oh one F, matters leading to the appointment, employment, promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension. Dismissal or removal of a particular person. And that would also be the basis for the second topic I want to address with the board. Along with Public Officers Law one oh eight three, which is basically attorney-client privileged communications. The third is under Public Officers Law one oh five D, proposed pending current litigation. There are, there is one potential or pending. Litigation matter, which is Brian Smith, the Notice of Discipline. And then I am looking to address Frank Dennis, D E N E S, as well as Kathleen Innis with the board. Each of those may relate to the board's decision on resolutions that are before you today. And the the fourth one is going to be for an attorney-client communication. And that's going to be regarding Resolution seven thirty four. And some legal. Advice I feel compelled to provide prior to your decisions. On the NACO resolution that deals with short-term rentals and reporting of sex offenders.
So the good way Supervisor Bramer.
I I have two questions for the county attorney, if you don't mind, Chairman. Thank you. On Resolution seven fifty five, which was the one that came out of Personnel regarding the ethics members. My recollection of that meeting was that the resolution that we passed was only to appoint the new members. However, I see on the resolution that we have the entire slate. I just want to be clear that when we passed the resolution in committee, it was just the new members and I, and. Now we're seeing and reappointing all of the members.
With all due respect, I defer to the clerk, but I believe we clarified before the vote. That we would, in fact, out of committee, appoint all members on one slate. For review by the board, so that all of their terms would start the same day. All of their terms would end the same day, and they would all do oaths of office. More or less on the same day, which will be next Thursday on the twenty second. Which will then be filed.
Okay. Can I please also ask if Earl Reading is going to be available to us during this executive session?
No, but I'll be addressing matters that have been provided to me by Mr. Reading.
Thank you.
Okay, so any emotion to go on the executive session?
Mr. Chair, it's not a motion, but I would ask for a consideration based on weather conditions and many guests that we have with us today. Can we move the executive session down the agenda to prior to adjournment?
I think a couple dealt with resolutions.
I can, I can represent that. I will be quick. As far as questions that come up, I can never. Predict the questions.
Okay, I think just in past experience, we have. Guests waiting in the halls sometimes for an extended period of time, so I'll take your opinion is just a recommendation.
I think he addressed that we have some resolutions that some of these discussions. Pertain to. So can we have a motion to go on the executive session? Motion by Supervisor McGowan, second by Supervisor Bramer. Any discussions? Oh, is in favor? Close. Okay, we'll get right in and try to get right out.